Everyone, it is Monday, September 26, 2022. Seven o'clock, here in the City Council chambers for the study session of the City Council. Officially call the meeting to order and entertain a roll call. Carla.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Candice.
Present.
Myers.
Here.
Rafi.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
And before is Atson.
As well as our city administrator this evening. We'll go into section C, Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Move into item D, Approval of the Agenda.
I would move that item F5 on the agenda be postponed until the October 24th study session at the request of the city administrator.
Second.
Motion by Drinkhouse, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Section E is public comments for items not on the agenda.
We have to approve the full agenda, yeah.
Yeah, we just said.
We just approved removing item.
Okay.
Approved as amended.
Yeah, approve it. I move that we approve the amended. I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So, to approve the amended agenda, Mr. Draco and Mr. Bergen. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have an agenda. We'll move forward to section E, Public Comments for Items Not on the Agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any council comments this evening? See, if nobody arrives, we'll move into section F, the Study Session Calendar, item number one. Heather Zychek will present to the City Council regarding the Special Olympics. And I see she has one guest that has joined her as well. So, you may take to the podium and your technology and have at it.
Well, thank you, guys, for having us. My name is Heather Zychek. I am the Assistant Director at the W. I'm in charge of the aquatics facilities. I'm also the try-by-night race director and I am the SAC liaison.
I'm Sidney Illig. I'm a fifth-year student at Warburg. I'm the SAC president this year. I'm also on the softball team at Warburg and I'm a biology major as well.
Okay, so, we're going to talk to you guys tonight about our Unified Sports Day Special Olympics. Carla had asked way back in the spring if we would come and present. So, what we first wanted to do was just lay a little bit of a foundation about what Unified Sports Day is and how important it is to Division III. So, Warburg College here in Waverly is a Division III institution. And Division III is huge on discovering, develop, and dedicating their student athletes. So, the three things we're going to focus on today is just to give you a little bit of history of what Warburg SAC is. We're going to talk to you about our Unified Sports Day and Special Olympics. And then, we're going to work, speak to how we made a partnership with the Bremer County Dream Rollers here in town. So, the first thing, Warburg SAC. So, the purpose of SAC, the Student-Athlete Advisory Committee, is to enhance the total student-athlete experience by promoting opportunity, protecting student-athlete welfare, and fostering communication between the student-athlete and the athletics administration. The next thing, as I just mentioned, is we are required by NCA Division III to have a SAC group on campus. So, we do have that every year. We have an executive team, which Sid is a part of that, as well as representatives from each of our athletic programs at Warburg.
Oh, push her again.
The other issue, we want to provide insight to the student-athlete experience. We also put input on rules, regulations, and policies. So, our student-athletes get to have a vote with Division III legislation. We also promote communication between our athletes, administration, and our coaches. We disseminate that information to our teams. We provide feedback and insight on that legislation. We build community, which we're going to focus on with our Unified Sports Day endeavor. And then, we organize community service efforts. Unified Sports Day SAC helps us with try-by-night. And then, also to promote a positive student-athlete presence on campus.
So, Warburg SAC, a few things that we are really focused on. One is Special Olympics and Unified Sports Day, which we'll talk about a little bit later. The try-by-night that happens in May every year. We're really a big part in gathering volunteers and helping out with that program. Holiday shop, we have that around Christmas time. We encourage student-athletes to go, like, purchase presents of various, like, kids' ages that we donate to the community. DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion are also very big within SAC and within our program. Just, you know, making sure everyone feels like they have a home at Warburg, no matter who they are, what they look like, or what they like to do, really. And then, student-athlete well-being. This comes in the form of, like, mental health programs for student-athletes, as well as just all Warburg students that need our services. And then, how our SAC group looks like. We have our two advisors, Heather and Sheila. Our exec team, there's five of us, all different sports, men's and women's sports. And we kind of mix, like, big sports versus smaller sports at Warburg. So, we have a good group this year. And then, as far as representatives from our other sports teams, so, there's 15 women's teams and 13 men's teams. So, we have two reps from each sports team. So, 56 total members this year. And we meet, like, once a month, usually, like, big, large group meetings. So, then, going into Unified Sports Day, so, this is an event that we've had every year in February. We operate at the W at Warburg. And so, we have a partnership with Special Olympics, Division III does, that we started about 10 years ago. It really just raises awareness of Special Olympics, you know, gets athletes that are at the collegiate athletes more involved than Special Olympic athletes. And it just enhances the lives of everyone involved, really. Like, I think a common theme of this whole presentation is the Special Olympic athletes love working with us Warburg students. And, you know, the same way for us, we love working with them. We have always, always had such a fun time. And so, this is definitely true. Providing mutual learning experience for both, like I said. And it just sets the scene for the conferences across the country, a lot of other schools partake in Unified Sports Day, as well as have a big involvement in Special Olympics. And so, overall, this partnership has benefited a lot of people throughout the years.
And kind of a thing to note is that Division III, 10 years ago, began this partnership as, you know, Division III with Special Olympics. We are actually on year 24 at Warburg. So, we were kind of ahead of the curve with offering Unified Sports Day. So, that's something we've been very proud of in our student-athletes, you know, like Sidney and all of her teammates and fellow other athletes have done a great job of promoting this event on campus, which we'll go into more depth here. We've been asked, actually, pre-COVID, to become a champion school by Special Olympics Iowa. So, Brian down at the state office in Boone asked us heading into the fall of 2020, COVID hit, we kind of put it off. But this year, we are doing it. We're becoming a champion school. So, we needed to fit three tiers. Offering Unified Sports Day, we have been doing that, like I said, for 24 years this spring. A community partnership, which we had started back in 2018, 2019 with the Bremer County Dream Rollers. And Mindy Hart, she's kind of the leader of that group. And then, what we needed, our third tier that we needed to fulfill is Respect Week, which we'll be doing the first week of March on Warburg's campus, which works really well into our DEI initiative at the American Rivers Conference-wise and with Special Olympics Iowa. So, it all kind of folds together super well.
So, Unified Sports Day, like Heather said, this year will be our 24th annual Unified Sports Day on February 11th. This event wouldn't be possible, of course, without all the help at Special Olympics. But we also have a lot of sponsorship from the Kiwanis Group. And so, they actually come on the day of the event and present us with their donation and are there the whole day. And so, super cool that they're able to do that. So, we will have the 56 SAC members that are helping and having a big role in the day. But we'll also have around 150 or 200 student volunteers. Majority are Warburg athletes, but a lot of just regular Warburg students also help out in the event. And so, really, there's a lot of people there, a lot of fun, a lot of different backgrounds. And so, makes for a great day as far as how the day works. So, we start with opening ceremonies. We say the Special Olympic, like, the pledge, their pledge, that's what it is. We hear from some of the SAC exec team that put it together. We hear from Kiwanis. And we just get ready to have a fun day. And so, then, the event takes place in the fieldhouse of the W. We have, like, 20 stations all over the track, anywhere from crafts, bowling, basketball, frisbee, bocce ball. We have a big parachute that we, you know, like, throw in the air and run under. Really fun. We spend, like, just rotate through all the activities. And it's a blast. There's usually, like, anywhere from, like, two to five Special Olympic athletes in each group and then maybe like seven to 10 Warburg athletes in each group rotating together. And so, just doing activities together the whole day. It's a lot of fun. And then, to end the event, we have a basketball game on center court of the W. All those Special Olympic athletes that want to play will play in the basketball game. We'll even get, like, some of the Warburg athletes in that game. We'll carry around, like, a microphone and ask some of the Special Olympic athletes, like, how they liked the day, their favorite part, something they got better at. And it really is just very fun. And then, we send everyone home with free lunch. And that's that, usually from the morning till, like, noon or one. So, super quick, but lots of fun. We have a community partnership that we do outside of the Unified Sports Day with the Bremer County Dream Rollers and Mindy Hart is the coach of that. So, what we do prior to Unified Sports Day is all the athletic teams take turns helping out with their practices. So, they practice twice a week. And different sports teams at Warburg will, like, sign up to join their practices. Sometimes, they focus on, like, basketball. Sometimes, it's more baseball, a lot of different things. But Mindy basically plans the practice and we just kind of help them out with whatever they're doing. And so, it's super fun to work with them and, like, meet them, gain those familiar faces of the other Special Olympic athletes. And then, a few months later, when we have the Unified Sports Day event, we already know them, they, like, recognize us. And so, it just makes a lot more fun. We began those practices in 2018, have been doing them ever since. And then, yeah, like I said, each team goes around and helps at each of these practices. And then, another thing that we do through SAC is Respect Week. So, second week of March, it promotes inclusion in Unified Sports Day. We'll probably have, like, a big social media campaign, just about anything DEI related to Special Olympics, but also, you know, everything else that DEI encompasses. And so, I think it's just a great way to promote what we're doing as a program in SAC, as well as increase awareness for Special Olympics, Unified Sports Day, and all the great stuff we do with that. And like I said, joint endeavor. So, Vanessa is on our SAC exec team. She is on the Clay Target team and she does a lot with DEI. She's actually a disability studies major. And so, she's kind of our head this year. So, we'll be doing a lot of different campaigns on Respect Week. There'll also be, like, a separate social media campaign through the ARC, like, DEI Awareness Week. And so, you'll probably see some stuff on social media if you follow us. Really cool, just to raise awareness for all of that. And then, just to wrap it up, Special Olympics strives to create a better world by fostering the acceptance and inclusion of all people. I think our work with SAC and Unified Sports Day really speaks to that. The Special Olympic athletes that I worked with last February will still say hi to me in the W because they recognize me and we created that bond. And so, looking forward to getting that rolling again this year. And if you guys want to be involved in any way, you can do that. You can volunteer at the day of the event. Encourage people around you to volunteer or just come and hang out. It's a lot of fun and we hope you can pay attention to the good things we do this year.
Do you guys have questions?
I think it's great, you know, just the interaction. And, you know, we do have, you know, special needs individuals in our community that, you know, even looking at some of the pictures, I recognize some of those individuals. And it's, it's great to see that there's an avenue for them to be involved. So, thank you.
Are there age limitations? I don't think so. No, we've had anywhere from, like, young kids to grown adults, who, as long as they're involved with Special Olympics Iowa, they're able to take part in the event.
So, is Dream Rollers, is that just one team, one Special Olympics team?
Yeah, that's the one, the area one. I'm not one, I thought Mindy was going to be able to be here tonight, but she wasn't. But she's in charge of the Bremer County and, like, those individuals contact her and that, that's their group that they're associated with. So, everybody that comes to Special Olympics, like, they're part of a delegation. So, that's Bremer County Dream Rollers is, like, our area delegation. And so, they're registered with Special Olympics Iowa. So, they get all of the information, not only for our event, but events down at UNI, over in Dubuque, wherever it may be in the state of Iowa.
Excellent.
I mean, and it kind of just happened by chance. They were looking for some indoor space. She contacted me and I was like, "Yeah, we can give you space." And then, it kind of stemmed into, can we get SAC involved with this? Since we're already having this event, it's been a great way, like Sidney said, to get that extra contact with them. And, I mean, they would much rather work with our student-athletes than always, you know, deal with the grown-up coaches that are, that are helping them. So, they love that bond and that is neat when you, we see them around town or even at the W to make that connection with us.
You have something?
I was just saying, it's, it's not specifically Special Olympics, but with the Miracle Field getting up and running here, that would be a great.
Yeah, so, honestly, like, Mr. Langer and I have had a couple conversations of that, of how either SAC could get involved with the Miracle League. I also teach a class in the fall that would be great with working or, like, our adaptive PE. So, there's a lot of things kind of on the horizon that's exciting for not only SAC, but just other groups on campus. You know, Vanessa with her disability studies class, that there are always people looking to kind of do those projects, but may not always know, like, what is, what's available. It was surprising when I had Mr. Langer in to come talk to my class, the number of students that talked about Miracle Leagues and their areas that they were from. I mean, and I would have never known that had he not come in and we had that conversation. So, definitely something that we're looking into for, like, a fall-type activity that we may be able to help supplement with volunteers or, you know, internship opportunities. So, some neat stuff, for sure.
Anything further? Well, thank you very much, ladies, for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
We will move into our next section, number two, Planning and Zoning Commission, to present their annual report to council. See, we have Mr. Doug Benzker with us this evening.
Good evening. I'm Doug Benzker, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm going to briefly highlight the duties and responsibilities of the commission for the council, as well of those in attendance and those listening. Our responsibility is to review the issues related to subdivision development, zoning ordinance changes, current and future planning initiatives, and special provisional uses, and making recommendations to either the City Council or the Board of Adjustment. Our commission currently has the following members of myself, Stephanie Garner, David Huser, David Larson, who's the vice chairman, Kate Payne, Kathy Olson, and John Meyer. Recently, or in this past spring, Mary French and Heidi Solheim stepped down from the commission. Heidi had served for eight years and Mary had served for six years. We're currently being assisted by Bill Wurder and Paige Joder are the liaisons with the staff here for us. Some of the things we're currently involved in, just to highlight some of them, we're attending the comprehensive land use plan meetings and we're participating in the final adoption of the plan in the upcoming fiscal year. We're also reviewing future land use maps, as well as comprehensive plan. And then, we're, some of the things we're highlighting is the redevelopment of the Irving Park school site. And we're going to be reviewing some of the RFPs for that, that they'll be forwarding on to you guys. And that'll be coming up in October. The summary of the items reviewed over the year, I'm not going to go through them all. I think you've got a copy of them in front of you. If you have any questions, happy to answer any questions. Short and simple.
It's not always bad. As long as it meets Hank's seal of approval, right? Hank's over there, is that it? Any, any questions? I know Doug sat down and.
I suppose the one question I have is, I know that we reduced the size of the commission from nine members to seven members. Is that still, is that working well for you?
It is, it is. I think it was maybe more of a function of interest and level of participation than it was, it just made it easier. Plus, I think a lot of people, including myself, can't make every single meeting. So, to get a quorum, it was a little bit more difficult to pass any types of recommendations on to you. But no, I think it's working just fine. It's a little easier to get that number of people here than it is to get nine and have quorum of five versus four.
Okay.
I just want to express appreciation for you guys' level of knowledge and expertise. Couple of times, I've had to call you to say, "What does this mean?" Or, "Can you explain this to me?" As I was prepping for something that was on our agenda. And I, I'm overwhelmed by how much you have to know. And I really appreciate all you guys put in to.
You've got a good group of people. Good selection, good cross-section.
Excellent. Anything else? All right. Thank you, sir. Now, we'll turn it over to Eric for item number three, City of Waverly Vegetation Management, Presentation on Prairies, Natural Areas, and Road Sides.
I think NASA was supposed to crash a satellite into an asteroid at about 7:15. So, hopefully, this doesn't end as spectacularly as that did.
Well, we're still here.
All right. Thanks for having Eric here tonight to kind of talk about the Vegetation Management Department and what we're trying to do with the natural areas, the prairies, the road sides, all of that good stuff. Just want to remind you that this is just a, I wouldn't say a small part. It's probably, it's a very good chunk of what the Vegetation Management Department does. But they do have other responsibilities as well. But this is what we're going to focus on tonight, just so you guys kind of know how we're trying to maintain those areas. Quick history, I think everyone's aware, we started the Vegetation Management Department in July of 2018. That's when Eric was hired for the lead position of Vegetation Management. In 2019, we hired Patrick Rancleff as another full-time employee. He's still with us today. And then, we also have, if we're lucky, we have two seasonals during the summer. We're always in between that one or two seasonal spot. But if we're lucky, we have the two. So, anyway, Eric Schares is here to present on this tonight. So, I'll give it to him.
Yeah, I feel like this is pretty good timing to give this update. I think we're really starting to get our feet underneath us here. Like you said, I started in 2018, then we got Patrick in 2019. Really good asset to the city, Patrick is, just very knowledgeable on his plants, just a real good equipment operator, just real good working with Patrick. We've been fortunate enough to have some pretty good part-timers, too, the last couple of years. That always helps us as well. So, I guess, what do we do for Vegetation Management? You know, people ask me what I do for work and I usually don't say Vegetation Manager, because they usually look at you sideways. So, I say, you know, we're the, we're the forestry department for Waverly. That's probably about 60% of what we do. Not going to talk too much about that today, but, you know, we have 5,000 street park trees that we have inventoried, which, which is quite a bit, but that really doesn't even account for, like, any tree that would fall out of a wooded area along the trail. It's, it's not inventoried, but if it's across the trail, we got to go deal with it. So, you know, that number can double or triple pretty easily. So, that's a big chunk of what we do. But like I said today, we'll talk more about the Vegetation Management side, I guess. So, we'll add a second, third slide here. All right, so, there's our challenges. Biggest, biggest challenge is just keeping that balance between what we think is right for the environment. I mean, we are the conservation department, too, I guess is what I should say we are. What's right for the environment, trying to keep complaints down. You know, we don't, if there's one complaint in an area, we don't just want to change our management style completely. We kind of want to take, you know, the complaints as they come in or just see what the majority of people want us to do. So, that's a big part of it. We're not just mowing to mow, I guess. That's, that's another big thing. A lot of the duties that we do, public works used to do, they did a lot of the mowing. And then, the tree work was kind of split between parks and public works. But, so now, we do all that. We do probably some more extensive tree work as well, too. So, like I said, finding the balance and then just kind of taking into account what this area was, you know, before any of us were here. Iowa was 75 to 80% covered in prairie. And today, it's down to 0.1% of that. So, you know, I'm not saying, "Hey, let's take houses, buildings out. Let's just try to keep what we have." So, that's kind of what we're trying to balance here. I can go to that next one. So, basically, everything we do can kind of fall into one of these four categories up there for you, your natural areas, your prairies, road sides, and also the riverbanks. Maybe a fifth part two could be trails. There's a little bit different management style on that. But everything pretty much falls in this category. And a big thing, I said, you know, we're getting our feet under us here. We, we put every area into one of these four here. So, another big thing is service requests or complaint comes in from a citizen saying, "Hey, you guys haven't mowed so-and-so and it's, it's August." Before, the service requests would come to me and I have to call the person. A lot of times, it'd be a site visit. Sometimes, Gary would be on, on, on. But now, we have a management plan where that call comes in and up at City Hall, they can say, "Okay, that's, this is so-and-so place, it's August, they're not going to mow it till September." So, you know, we don't even need to go out and look at it, unless there's something crazy happening. But most of the time, it's just, yep, they'll, they'll be there in September. So, you can just kind of stop it right there. Go to the next one. Okay, so, we'll go in depth a little bit more on some of these areas. Your natural detention areas. So, I know when you talk flooding in Waverly, people get a little nervous and for, for good reason. But most of the time, when it rains, it's not flooding. It's just a normal rainfall event. So, in a normal rainfall event, you want to slow that water to help filter out the nutrients, the sediments, just not talking back it up or stop it, but just slow the flow. I'm sure Mike can, could talk for a while on your detention and natural area, the construction of them. But we're just trying to filter out that sediment nutrients. I went to a conference a couple of weeks ago and they said that Iowa was responsible for, was it 70% of the nutrients and sediment in the Gulf of Mexico? for, was it 70% of the nutrients and sediment in the Gulf of Mexico? And I mean, that's just kind of what you get with Iowa, you know, we're feeding America really, but it's just, we want to try to minimize that or hold it where it's at. So that's kind of what we do with our maintenance style on some of this stuff. We're not going to mow until September. We're going to keep that area for nutrient sediment runoff, keep that grass tall. It slows down the flow of water. In your major rain events, it'll just, it'll fold it right over and it won't restrict the flow at all. It will, there will be a little turbidity, they call it, I guess that'll help filter out some there, too. So that's just kind of what we're thinking there. We try to spray as little as possible, but you still, you still got to do it. So we'll go out and spot spray twice there, and that's just for your noxious weeds, like your wild parsnip, your thistles, any woody plants that start to pop up, you just kind of want to keep those to a minimum. But that's kind of the basics of what we do in some of those natural detention areas. Go to the next one. All right, prairie areas. These are what we're trying to develop more of around town. We have, I believe, four areas now we've developed in the last couple of years. These are, they're slow-going. A lot of times you think you plant it, just like your lawn, and it's up in a couple of weeks. These take three to four years to really, really get going. We have probably our, one that's going the best that we established since the vegetation manager department's been up and running, and that is the area just north of the soccer complex, just south of Cedar River Parkway. We actually planted that with a grant. But yeah, so that one's very colorful right now. We got a couple of other areas around town that we just started, like the corner of Highway 3 and 218, that triangle there. But some of those, just when they start to get showy flowers that first year, you got to mow them, because you got, you got some weeds coming in, and you're just trying to control that. So it'll take anywhere from two to three years. These, we like to burn March and April, kind of depends year to year on if it's a dry year or a wet year. And then they'll mostly take care of themselves. Sometimes we'll cut some, some of the plant, or some of the weeds out that we see, and then if we have to mow, we'll mow them. But we're starting to try and develop more and more of these areas around town. Okay, go to the next one. All right, road sides. This is another big area that people maybe don't think of as being a big area. There's, there's a lot of road sides, and it takes a while to get around to them. So kind of how we help mitigate that is we'll just mow one pass along the shoulder three times a year there, June, July, August. Just spot spray once in there, too. But that kind of helps with your visibility for any critters running across the roads, just your sight lines when you pull up to a stop sign. Paul's usually pretty good at that, because he's got that short little car there, he can tell me if there's getting to be some tall grass at intersection. But anyways, yeah, so usually we can get around in two or three days all around town, get that one pass done, and then in September and October, you do the whole ditch to try to keep those woody plants down. Otherwise, I mean, they'll, it'll just be, your ditches will be full of trees to the, basically, the road. So that takes about a month and a half to do, so that's why we only do it once a year. But yeah, so that's, that's a pretty tall task, but if we do it just once, we can handle it. All right, you can go to the riverside. All right, riverbanks, slightly different management style than some of these others here. You know, they're, they're very hard to mow usually. We have that nice boom mower that kind of has that arm that, with the deck that reaches down, that, that really helps maintain some of these areas. Anywhere where we have riprap, it makes it a lot easier, too, because you can kind of spot spray. You got to be careful if you don't have riprap there, because I mean, your vegetation is what's holding the riverbank in place. So we usually try to be pretty cautious on what we're doing in some of those situations. All right, you can go to the next ones. All right, kind of a good mantra, I think, is the greatest good for the most amount of people for the longest time. And I feel that's, that's kind of what our department likes to try to do. You know, you're never going to eliminate all of the noxious weeds. You're just, you're just trying to give the native plants a chance. So that's what we try to do with a lot of this, this management that we're doing here, and I feel like we're doing a pretty good job. I don't know, see what you guys say, but there we go. That's really all I have. Any questions?
I want to know where this field of bluebells is. Do you remember?
That's Brooklyn Park?
It's down in Kewanis.
Kewanis Park.
Actually, I don't know if it's city property, but it's right next to it.
Yeah, I think you guys do a great job. I mean, I get all sorts of compliments from people, you know, who are coming through town. I contacted you guys not too long ago about a detention base, and a neighbor had contacted me about, you had a game plan. And a lot of it's just educating people, you know, those, those aren't necessarily weeds that we're allowing to grow. There is a method to this madness, and they're going to get to it, and that's all it took for that citizen. And so I think it's, I think you're doing a great job, and you have a lot of ground to cover with a pretty small staff, so it's impressive.
Well, I still remember, I think it was last year, when we had that major windstorm come through along the bike trail, and I mean, it was, it was, you know.
Took weeks.
Well, I mean, it was maybe a quarter of a mile, but I mean, it was, you guys were getting like a couple of feet every day.
Yeah.
And it took us a lot of work.
Yeah.
But you got it done, and we all appreciate it as a town. So that was tough work, and we're glad that you were there to get it done.
Thank you.
I think there was one citizen that talked about a park in town, and I think I had forwarded on to Garrett about a resident across the way, and I'm sure, you know, explaining to that resident, hey, this is our game plan adjacent to this park, we're not mowing as much of it for this purpose. And that communication is, I think, is probably the expectation of the council, and I think that's what you've articulated very well. In particular, one that, and maybe I missed it in here, is the 10th Avenue corridor from 4th Street Southwest back over to Heritage Way. In those right-of-ways, that was an area that was brought to my attention. I know it's the one where there's the Burma Shave signs, that area's been recently mowed, probably with this programming. But a resident out in that area had brought it to my attention that, you know, they've even done, maybe done some mowing to make it look nicer, and that could probably impede on your programming that you've got as well. So that's another notation to put there is, we don't want to take it upon ourselves to, you know, be trying to mitigate something which is actually progress of a plan, so.
Yeah. And I mean, it might take a little while to change public perception, too. I mean, you know, this has only been 2018, and it was just me for half a year, and then we just got the two employees for half a year, you know, 2020 explains itself, you know, 2021 is kind of when we just started, so really we've only been doing it for about a year.
Yeah.
So it's just one growing season, really.
Anything else? All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Garrett. That brings us to item number four, review City of Waverly Municipal Code Regarding Golf Kart Usage on City Streets. I'd be amiss to clearly identify who put this on. I think it was, it was at least two people. I think, you know, there was, James had wanted to maybe have it discussed as well. I know Heather had seen some things, but I don't know where we want to go in talking about this.
I guess I just thought it would be helpful to revisit it. It came up when we were talking about UTVs and ATVs on city streets, and we talked about whether we should look at the golf cart ordinance, maybe make it more specific or add to it. And then we got an email not too long ago from Joe Bagelman, who's here tonight, just expressing some concerns about, you know, kids on golf carts on busy streets, lack of safety, seat belts, et cetera, on golf carts. I know there's some neighborhoods in town where people use golf carts more frequently for transportation. I was surprised when we, when I read this, it doesn't say anything about going to a golf course in a golf cart. And so I guess I just thought it, we might want to discuss it. I was interested to hear from Chief Purcell whether, you know, officers have concerns about safety, whether it's a non-issue, what, you know, whether your department sees the need for us to, to make any changes to this, just, just safety in general. I thought we could discuss it. So I don't know if you have any comments.
If you have any, yeah.
So the, the city ordinance, Waverly ordinance mirrors the state code, and so anything we would want to add would be adding, we're allowed to have it more specifically if we'd like to. But now it just mirrors what the state code says, got to be 18, I'm sorry, not 18, 10, valid driver's license, good working brakes. City council has to allow it, otherwise it's not allowed. And then if you do allow, it can't be on primary roadways, and it has to have an SMD, and it has to have a bicycle safety plan. So that's what state code says, and that's what our, as far as concerns, yes, I mean, anytime you allow, you know, use of a piece of equipment or vehicle that's not developed for the roadway, there's always those safety concerns. And I would say they're much different than what I raised during the ORB discussion. So I think there was a, you mentioned the golf course. There, I think I was one of those urban legends for like 20 years that, you know, it's, it's to and from a golf course. And then when people really started looking at it and say, oh, it doesn't say that. No, it doesn't. So, but I think that's what most people, I would say, probably up until maybe 10 years ago, limited to that, to and from. And now I think over the last few years, you start seeing it being used a lot more. There's a lot more use out there recreationally than I've seen in the past. So it is changing, I would say.
I mean, do you see it as an issue? I mean, is it something you would recommend that we, I don't know, add restrictions on speed or, or is it, is it a non-issue? I mean, are there, have there been accidents? Are there, there's accidents waiting to happen, it sounds like, but what are your thoughts?
I don't know that we've responded to any accidents. I can't recall off the top of my head, and I didn't have a chance to look up.
Is it something you even see as enforceable? If we would, I don't know, restrict this more? I don't know if they have speed limits. Some of them have governors, but some of them can go pretty fast.
Yeah, they're limited to 25 just by the sense that they can't be on a primary road extension, so that's limited to 25 mile an hour speed zone. And I would, I don't know about much about golf carts, if they can go, that's pretty fast for a golf cart, to go up to that speed, but.
And I wouldn't think you'd want to introduce a difference in speed within the streets that help accidents increase. You'd want them to drive as fast as the cars, if possible. Reduces.
Up that speed limit, yeah.
Public speed limit.
I think if anything, just having this conversation, bringing it out there, and bringing the ordinance up and discussing what it entails, you know, encourages compliance. I know we've seen them, you know, driving through Coleman Park at times, and seeing them, you know, here or there, that just don't make sense, but you know, on the streets, if they're following this, then it is.
Bill, might talk briefly about it. We tried to separate golf carts and ORB, and said if, if we were to have a discussion on golf carts that, and there was changes that wanted to be made, that we could make it a better ordinance, more specific, calling out to stay off of public sidewalks, specifying different, you know, pulling in from the other ordinances, pulling in the information from the parks, you know, you can put that in the golf cart ordinance as well, and you can make it easier for folks to understand.
Yeah, do you think that there would be merit to that, to rewriting it a bit and?
I think you could always clarify things. It is a vague ordinance, for sure.
I think the one thing that's been violated the most is the fact that nobody has a flag, or very few people have flags or the triangle. But many of them have lights on front and back, and it, they don't usually operate it after dark. The ones with lights occasionally push that level a little bit, because they do have lights.
Well, I, just my own personal experience, which is obviously not any kind of scientific view, it seems to me that I've seen a lot more golf carts out on the streets than I have in the past, at least going past my house. Whether that's true or not, I'm not sure. A number of them are at times where they probably shouldn't be out. I mean, it's, it's quite dark, and I really can't say whether they have slow-moving vehicle signs and a flag on or not. I haven't, I mean, people are going to do dumb things because people just do dumb things, and I'm not sure that we can pass enough city ordinances to keep people from doing dumb things. My concern is that you have a, a vehicle that is not really, I mean, it's designed for driving around on a golf course, and that's probably what it should be doing, but I think that if it's used responsibly, it can also be an adjunct to people getting from point A to point B. I mean, we've been talking a little bit around the edges of alternative methods of transportation other than just cars. And, you know, and I understand the argument about having different types of vehicles sharing the same roadway, which, which might be a concern, but you know, we also have bicycles. I've seen a number of people on motorized, I don't know, not skateboards, but whatever they're called. I've seen a number of people on those going down the streets. So you know, the streets are already being shared by a lot of different types of vehicles. This, this might not be something that we would have to address at this point, but I think it's something to keep, keep an eye on, and if we do end up having a lot more complaints about people driving golf carts without the proper safety features on them, or driving them at night, or driving them recklessly, that might be something that we would have to, to reexamine. I'm always a little concerned about passing an ordinance to prohibit somebody from doing something just because we think that they might be, that they, that they might be stupid doing what they're doing. You know, you can't legislate against stupidity.
Except for speaks, seat belts, you know, so, and drunk driving.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's, yes, there's some real society, societal costs for people not using seat belts or drunk driving. And I always felt that somebody didn't want to use a seat belt, that was fine, but society always has a great cost for somebody if they're badly injured or dies, die because they're not wearing a seat belt. There's a cost that is also imposed on society, not just to the family, but, but society as a whole. There's some way that that could be isolated, so that cost would only be borne by that individual. Do whatever you want to do, I don't care. But there's a societal cost. And certainly, you know, we have a, you know, there's a reason we want to make sure that our streets are safe. And if having vehicles like golf carts sharing the streets with a lot of other vehicles that are really not going to pay attention to whether there's golf carts on the street, I've seen some pickup trucks that I think would squish a golf cart like a bug. You know, maybe they shouldn't be on the same streets. So I think it's an area of concern, but maybe it's not one that is really something that we need to be worried about right now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think my main concern is people who are underage driving them. I think it's important, you know, like the mayor said, just by discussing this, I think we're getting out there that this is not for junior high kids to be driving. It shouldn't be the main source of transportation for a child.
Right.
And I think, you know, parents and, I think having small children on the seat of a golf cart who are unrestrained is potentially dangerous, especially if you're going 25 miles an hour. It's dangerous on a golf course sometimes, right? So.
Truthfully, we might, I don't know, do, do most golf carts have seat belts?
No.
So, you know, there's a situation where you do have people that are unrestrained, and I don't know if that's anything that we could do, but certainly making sure that people understand that. people understand that there are rules that you have to follow if you're going to be driving a golf cart on a city street, having a, a flag, a slow-moving-vehicle emblem, and having a driver's, valid driver's license, and not driving at night, and then those kinds of things. I mean, I always thought that, my understanding was a golf cart could only be driven to and from the golf course.
That was the urban.
And I was a little surprised when I read this, too. There's absolutely nothing in here about golf courses. So I think there might be a lot of this miscommunication about what you can actually do on a golf course, and what you need to do to comply with the city ordinances. So, and, you know, if there's some way that we can tighten up the city ordinance on that without completely prohibiting golf courses, I'd be really open to that. So I, I think that would be, if, if we can find some things that we can do along that line, I think that would be great.
Couple of my suggestions might be, again, just adding the public sidewalks to keep them out of our parks. I think we could probably all agree that there should be the only number of individuals in the cart where they can sit. We've, I've seen folks hanging out the backend where the, you know, where the bags are supposed to be. I don't think that would be too restrictive from the city to say you have to be able to get, and be able to sit down on a seat. I don't know that some think about it, but it is considered a motor vehicle in the sense that it's required to have insurance. So if you run and operate on a more, on a golf cart on a city street, you're required by state law to have that insured. And so we could, you know what I'm saying? There's, there's things not even to make it less restrictive, but just to make it more informational in the code as well.
Rich, what are the consequences for not flying a flag on that?
It's, it falls under simple misdemeanor city code, city ordinance, so up to a two-hundred dollar fine.
How about if you're underage driving one?
Same thing, it all falls under city.
I'm, I'm wondering, too, since there aren't any restraints on these, if there would be some way that we could restrict the ages of people riding off golf carts? I mean, one of the problems, if somebody has a three-year-old who's riding in their golf cart, it seems to me that that's more dangerous than having two adults, or somebody holding a, a baby in their arms while they're driving the golf cart, or something like that. I don't know if that's something that could be done, is restrict the ages of people in a golf cart. That might be, be too.
That'd be hard with force. I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, can I see your I D? Well, no, they're under sixteen, they don't have a driver's license. I mean, how old are they? Dad says they're ten, so, gosh, they look seven, but.
I'd like to see us maybe tighten it up a little bit, like you said. And one of the things that struck me as I was reading through this, I'm, I don't see it on this particular page that we've got in our packet this time, but I'm assuming that they are required to observe all of the usual motor vehicle laws. But one of the complaints that we've heard from the public in the past is people driving them through neighborhoods, either obviously intoxicated, or openly drinking while they're in the golf cart. And I would assume that's not legal?
No, and that, like I said, it's, it's not defined as a motor vehicle where you can register it, but it is defined as a motor vehicle that you can get an O W I. If you're operating one on a public roadway, open container, have to have insurance on it. So, yeah, those things can, should be addressed, yeah, people aren't aware of that. It's not a way around those, those laws.
Can we get a N W I, driving drunk on a golf course?
Yeah.
Anywhere in the state.
Snowmobile, boar reefs, yeah.
Boat.
Did you ask for a golf course? So, do you have to be in a roadway, or if you're in a golf course? So, but if you're in the golf course?
No.
You could be drunk and driving your golf cart on a golf course.
Yes. Or private property.
Private property, okay.
But I'd like to see some of those things added. Maybe we don't need to get too deep into the weeds trying to legislate every possibility, but I like your idea of saying you can only have the number of passengers that are able to have a seat. And I think that, as I think the mayor mentioned, just getting public awareness a little more acute, too. And not to put the onus on our police department, but if the public is made to know that here's the, here are the restrictions, these are the rules that you have to follow, and you are subject to being cited if you're not following those things, might go a long ways towards making it better.
Could, could you just clarify one thing for me? When you're, you're talking about golf court, golf carts being operated on sidewalks, are they able to be operated on sidewalks or, or trails now?
The, they call out on the trails specifically no, right? And the sidewalks, there is no specific ordinance that says they can't. We define that they can on the streets, so we've always told people to stay out of sidewalks. But that's where you could come up with the, to make it a little bit more clear.
Sure.
Yeah.
So that was kind of, I mean, my question is, is there a way to get a golf cart across the river legally without, like, putting in a trailer and hauling it? I mean, can you actually drive a golf cart? I mean, because you can't, all the bridges are too high speed limit. The, the bicycle bridge is no golf carts on trails.
Right.
So if you're on one side of the river, is it possible to drive your golf cart to the other side legally?
Someone are you yes, or are you no? That's why you clarify it in the ordinance, but we worry still people that they know, stay out of sidewalks.
Okay. So, I mean, that's the closest to legally would be, be on the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Okay.
But then you gotta ask that question, do you want to place that out where the pedestrians are walking?
Well, it, it makes sense, that would be a nice thing to clarify.
Yeah.
I mean, you recognize, like, I, I've ridden snowmobile from Clarksville to Waverly back in the day, and we used to cross the bridge over by Shell Rock to cross the Shell Rock River, and you would ride on that shoulder, you know, and by all code, you're not legal, but it's an allowance with the, the D N R and such. But I don't know if there's that type of allowance for that or not. So, I think kind of the consensus that a lot of people, going back to my, my comment, is, you know, getting this shared on the police department's Facebook page, just a, a reminder of the cities, and maybe in the spring leisure services, you know, newsletter, you know, just having it there as the, you know, the golf season starts up again. Just to reiterate, this is what the ordinance is going into the, the new season, might not be a bad habit to get into.
Yeah, I'd like to see a rewrite, I think, with some of the things you mentioned about sidewalks, parks. I mean, common sense says you should have a seat on a golf cart.
But it's probably one of our biggest complaints.
Yeah. People hanging off the back. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's always good to try to prevent brain injuries before they happen, right? So I, I'd like to see a tighter ordinance, but I don't want to prohibit them from the roads, but it's pretty vague right now. And apparently, we need to do some education, because people are violating these common sense rules, so.
I would like to see us tackled getting across the river, and, I mean, I guess I see only one uncomfortable way to do that, and that's to take it across the rail bridge. Otherwise, we're putting them on Bremer Avenue, or we're putting them on, on the first bridge, yeah, the Adams Bridge. I'm not real comfortable with that, but.
They could rent a parking spot at the cart barn.
That's right. But if we don't do anything, people are just going to break the laws or ignore it, or we're, we're, you know, we're going to send them down a road that we may not want them to. And, you know, I suppose it could be Bremer Avenue where we want to cross. I don't know, is that legal? If we, we can't do that.
Down the road.
So Adams is the only alternative, and that's not a great bridge to put a golf cart across.
If only.
The freedom is too high there to do it.
Can they legally go across the Adams Bridge?
By state code, I don't.
Now, if you consider a part of the road.
Right. And there's really no sidewalk there. I mean, you've got kind of a sidewalk on one side, but it's pretty narrow.
So it does leave the rail trail bridge as the only possible.
That's kind of uncomfortable, but with it, you could control it. I suppose you could put some sort of crazy low speed limit across there. I'm, I'm sure it's being done now.
Well, I, I mean, I, I can't imagine leisure services, like, supporting the idea of golf carts on that trail. I mean, I think there are enough.
I wouldn't support that.
Yeah, I mean, there are enough pedestrians, I mean, I would, I would hate to be walking my dog when a golf cart was coming through, because I have a hard enough time controlling my dog, like, around people. So I just, I think that would be an even worse disaster.
Well, is it reasonable to assume that anyone who has a golf cart is going to have a trailer? And if they want to get across the river, they need to use their trailer?
That, that would seem like a reasonable solution to me.
Actually, that's probably not true, though. Most people don't have trailers.
Is that right?
Yeah.
You can tell I'm not a golfer.
Yeah, they operate out of their own garage, and they usually are on their own course.
How do they get them to wherever they go to get them repaired?
Uh, they usually come get them.
Yeah, the service.
So they don't really have a lot of, people don't have a lot of trailers.
I suspect that if you live on the other side of the river from the golf courses, you probably do have a trailer, though.
Probably. Or, or a cart.
Or a car.
Chief Priscilla, do you have an opinion you'd be willing to share with us about the crossing the river issue?
I think we have to have a staff discuss it.
Yeah, as you're saying. Let him gather his thoughts.
I have one other quick question, just since we're talking about this. I know it's only been a few months since the O R V ordinance went into effect, but are you seeing anything unexpected from that that we should be considering as we look at modes of transportation ordinances?
Expected on my part, no. There's people violating it on a fairly regular basis. But what has been unexpected, or hasn't been, an abundance of it. I mean, I think you notice them just because they're different, but I don't think that numbers, you know, there's not an excessive number of, of O R Vs out there.
And are they, are you guys issuing tickets?
Uh, no. I haven't issued, we haven't issued any yet. That is a discussion that's been taking place. Our officers are, they do like, they do a lot of what I say in reference to education first, I think that's what we all want. And because it is a fairly new ordinance, there's been a lot of stopping and talking to individuals. So that's, they, they're being addressed, they're just not being cited at this point. And to be honest with you, just sometimes it's hard to catch. I've been at.
Yeah.
Local brewery a couple nights, and when somebody comes off First Street, you talk about across the river, it's a quick half-block, and they're gone, and they're off to the other side street, and unless somebody's sitting there to see it, you just, you won't notice it. So, I would say that's probably the biggest violation that we're observing is crossing the river. So, it goes to the point of the conversation with the golf carts, too, is people are looking for different solutions for that. Because I know, even though maybe it makes sense to go down to the rail trail, people don't want to go down the rail trail in an O R V, because they think it's, or to Cedar Lane, because they think it's out of their way. I'm only going to have to go a half-block, or I can go down all the way around town. And so they're not doing that.
Okay. I don't know what our October study session looks like, other than one agenda item for sure, that we'll be on that one. Don't think there's any huge hurry. I don't believe we'll have a November study session, or possibly a December one either. So, looks like more than likely, just depending on the holidays, Carla. But we'll see how it plays out, but we're not in any huge hurry with golf cart season kind of coming to an end, that maybe January would probably be the time. But then we're discussing budget things, too, so we'll leave it up to Rich and city staff to kind of earmark some time to continue the conversation. That's all right? Okay? All right. Thank you very much. Move into reports from boards and commissions, section G, number one. The Golf Commission minutes of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, received into record. Any staff updates from anybody? Mr. Cherry, up and, still, all right?
Garret doesn't have anything? Wow.
Oh, is that right? You good?
Never mind.
Okay. City Council comments, Mr. Bergen.
Um, I would like to invite anyone who would like to discuss city business with me to come join me for a beer at the poorhouse.
Thanks, sir. Rob?
I'll just say that the community garden is winding down for the season. This is our last week, so I want to thank all the volunteers who've been out, city staff who's mowed, and, and particularly Ron Lenth from ISU Extension Office, Bill Decker, Dave Arns, they've really been, boy, at that garden almost every day. So this week, we're mainly harvesting apples. There's a beautiful orchard on city property. If you've never seen it, go check it out. And then cleanup day is Saturday. So that's our last day of work there, so. And we have a record season, I think, I can't remember what the total is, closing in on ten thousand pounds, I think.
It's actually over ten thousand.
Is it? Okay.
Excellent. Smires?
Um, just a reminder, the Chamber has several events going on this week. Tomorrow morning is Waverly Connected at, from seven thirty to eight thirty at Fidelity Bank, the South location. Thursday evening, I think four thirty to six thirty is Chamber Happy Hour. Forgive me, I just completely blanked on where that is this week. Look at the Chamber website. And then this Saturday is Fall Fest Downtown.
Excellent. Lots of things going on. Mr. Schneider, Mr. Granco?
Uh, well, I just want to remind people, if, if they weren't aware of this, last week was the first session of the Community Read of sixteen nineteen project. And there was pretty good participation. This, this Community Read is sponsored by a number of different organizations, including the Waverly's Equity and Diversity Commission. And there's still time to register for it, even though you missed the first session. There are five more sessions there every Tuesday night. You do have to register for it, but the registration and the materials are free, so that shouldn't be a problem with anyone. It's, it's a fascinating look at the, the history of our country, and how different people have contributed to that history. So I would really encourage people to, to participate in that. If they're interested, I have the website for the registration here, but it's really long, and there's a lot of dashes, and dots, and slashes, and all that kind of stuff in it. So what I'll tell you is, if you're interested in it, just email me at my, my city email address, and I will forward that registration website to you. So hopefully people will show an interest in that, so, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Cangis?
Well, Rod brings it up, and as a former history major, I've enjoyed historical fiction over the years, too. And certainly, there's a lot of questionable historical accuracy within the sixteen nineteen project, and the biggest problem I have with it is that we have a commission that is supposed to be diversity and inclusion, and the sixteen nineteen project is arguably intentionally divisive. And I have, I do have some problems with the city having a say in that, or participation in that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I have two things this evening. Want to congratulate Coach Mark Hubbard on his hundredth win as a Go Hawk head football coach, and nonetheless, occurring on homecoming was quite an honor as well. According to Kayway this morning, that he wasn't even aware that he was encroaching on that number on his record. So it's kind of a surprise and caught off guard, so I just want to congratulate him, and obviously, the team that made that happen. And then officially announcing it's already out there, but trick-or-treating on Monday, the thirty-first of October, from five to seven thirty here in the community. I know Kayway has their indoor event at the center, that they'll be, you know, releasing the specific times on that as well. So whether you're looking for downtown activity with the Chamber, again, or looking at another outlet to keep everybody kind of corralled.
at another outlet to keep everybody kind of corralled, uh, inside and with no consideration of the weather, there's going to be that as well. So, without any further ado, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Please adjourn.
Motion by Cangis, second by Schneider, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.